Hi Kathy.
You showing the precinct list of how...
I'm just preaching.
Good morning.
Good.
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 And the key question was, can we either work for Adam Hansen? They say, yes.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I'm coming.
They say I haven't worked with them. Dean's or... They say I haven't worked with him.
How were you?
He was in the summer.
I'm not in the park. Oh, you have finished your conference, huh?
Remind me when you come back.
We're here, Kathy. I see you.
Alright, thank you for the tea. That one over there is like... Does it say Hansen on it or anything?
Have a nice, beautiful day.
Why would I need Ford Hansen or something?
And what gets me is that Treasure Island is in Chris's district and it's not in... How are you doing, buddy?
Let me see. Oops.
Oh, yeah.
Hey! You see me?
Yeah.
Ohhh, no, no. Let me see. Let me see. Oh, I see you. Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean.
I'll get you some more bowl.
There it is. Bobby, you got a bad one. I can see the light. Ooh, you got a bad one. No, he said that she... He said, "Yo, si puedo ver." Ooh, mommy. I can just see it now. I can see. Mommy, you look... You look beautiful, ma. You look beautiful. Come on. Hello, friend? It's ma. I can just see mommy's toes. Yeah, oh, yeah. Uh-oh. Let me see you. Can I see you? Over here. Do a funny face. Oh my gosh! The other one.
There we go, try it.
I can't see you.
Here, I'm pulling my finger off.
Uh, I don't... You're not pulling no finger out. Wait, stop moving, stay where you are, that's nothing. Oh my god, do something interesting, not pulling fingers out. This like fart. Oh my god! Damn!
A person took a picture of the Treasure Island with a slum in the island's district.
Oh, she looks very ugly. Do a funny face! Hey, come here! Is this yours?
Yeah.
Can you take it off, because I can't see here. I want to see, I want to see from here. I want to see from here. But I can't reach. Okay, open the thing.
It's open.
Not this. Wait, but can you open this?
Yeah.
Mommy, move! Oh, you want to be on the show, go ahead and be on the show, but you can't be on my film. Hey, but this is off.
Here, come on.
Uh, this is, this is gonna be right in the videotape. Let's see somebody.
You're so for president.
Oh, yeah.
Oh! Look at the ugly ones. Oh, I can just see it now. Oh no! You're, you're closing it. Time for a looking action. This is gonna be nice and... I can't even... You're like ugly. Let me see this little coast star. Hey, come here! Can I take this thing off? Why not? Oh, this is like that?
Yeah.
It's like that? Say cheese! Say cheese, ma. Say cheese, ma. You can't. You want to play. Mommy, you can hide, but you... I just... Look at my mouth.
And that's why Chris Haley has departments, uh, apartments in the town. People that live there that they could go with.
Hey, mommy! Nope, I want to videotape you.
I'll let you film, I'll let you see.
Watch it! Not you. Go! Like a cat! Hey, is that... On it up there? What are you... Say something! Get it through! Stupid! Stupid, stupid! You move it up here, ma! Stupid, 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 stupid! Fuck you, fuck you, fuck you, girl! Oh! Hi! I'm Nester from the town of Glorilla! You will... You'll get to happy, Nefcy!
For the living lady part...
Mommy!
Nesto! There's a mint sorbet, why is that funny?
Uh, the whole six long, uh, the long term...
Ooh, mommy!
Old sermon. Where the, uh, where the lady is. There's the two other huge...
Jackass! You tough ass! Hey, stupid fat boy.
Yeah, I know, because I did that, there we are.
Mommy, tell me some photos!
People are watching you.
Amazing.
Have you ever done this before?
Yeah, it's an alley way.
No, peso no, no estoy jugando con esto porque si lo puedes, va a ser muy caro. Mira, tienes esto. No, porque si rompes esto va a ser muy caro.
Vamos a ver que se.
Quieres una mazza? No? No!
Uh, you want a cookie? Sweet bread for those...
Those are not sweet cookies. Those are breads.
No se le olviden que calentan los tortillas. Porque alguna gente piensa que se comen así y que ya no están. Gracias.
Uh, I need a little help, sorry, help. Need help with the...
So, we need to cut off?
Um, I did, I did, yeah, I did just a few, like, definitely by house. No, I thought it'd die, I'm gonna start it.
Oh, no, 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 like, I know, I know, people do, you know, they're not all, that's why they're not enjoying it.
Um, I am the Spanish interpreter. Uh, I have just been to say to the audience that we are not supposed to do sign-off interviews of the commission. I have a great time for the commission to want to be taught and maybe to be interviewed for the commissioners. Therefore, we will be allowed to speak for about 20 minutes. That is a long time for me to speak and for one person to remember everything that I said. So, the way to go is for a person to spread some talk as a sentence. And then, then actually take the license, that's every second which I'm going to be sharing one night. Would they say one sentence as the nation is in its... You know, only the declaration of the...
Will the commission respond to whatever conversation is being spoken, if you want to translate to...
Okay, we're back in session.
Okay, as the planning commission is back in session, I do want to say that this, uh, the room is awfully crowded. We do have overflow in room 421, for those, when we start calling the names of the speakers, uh, we will value time to get to this room so you can speak. For the record, item number 18, case number 2002.0650D, the 33rd page, use the sharpness trick. This is a discretionary review case, and usually the rules for DR are that the DR requested is five minutes for a presentation, and those who support the DR, like, two, three minutes. Project sponsors, they give it up to five minutes for a presentation, those who support the project, they give it up to three minutes to discuss. At the conclusion, which excited, given that I'm a rebel, however, this is staff initiated request for the DR's approval. We're going to have an understanding of the president. The chair is going to alter the process, and we are going to take testimony from the project sponsor after the staff presentation, and we will go forward in respect of the chair's instruction. For the record, I call the item into the record. As you can note, that even though this was at various public hearings in the past, the hearing could decide if it's postponed, we've never really heard the item itself, although it does have continuance as of this now in the past.
Thank you, so we're going to start the presentation.
Good afternoon, this is President Mendez, meeting members of the commission. My name is Kate Lee, Department of Staff. Here are our letters and petitions in support, and in opposition to the proposed project, as well as a list of additional conditions of approval from a member of the opposition. In June 2002, when the project's billing form application was submitted to the department, the proposal to change the use of the first floor from a vacant barn to a community service office for day labors was a mandatory discretionary review of the commission's strategic controls. Since then, the controls have been amended. While they no longer require a DR, the department continued to process the project as a staff initiated DR, so that a public hearing could address community concern and relevant issues. At the director's hearing on October 17th, a request for information regarding neighborhood support, occupancy, and the transportation analysis approved and submitted was made. Since then, the RAC Central LAL has provided the planning department with this information. Letters of neighborhood support include signatures in support of the project, by the residential units above the nearby project area. Information regarding occupancy explains the trend peak hours, approximately 30 to 45 people in total will occupy the building, and that 90% of the employees who hired for the program do so by phone, not in person, thereby. And I went to the existing site of the campus 17 June on the web, according to the calendar, so the project program, so the thesis... The transportation analysis states that there are not expected to be any local, any impacts of local transportation networks, and that these are still problems of the current situation by street. As a result of these, they may actually improve as a result of the proposed project. After reviewing this information, a report has been issued, consisting of preliminary recommendation, with the conditions of certain level of impact, and control of time for the neighborhood protections.
I'd like to, if you were allowed, because I had to, I'd like to add to this case presentation too. Commissioner, I believe it is our role to ensure that you are informed in making your decision. That's what our analysis, that's what our recommendation, that's what our goal of that process is really about, to make sure that in making your decision, that you are informed. I think that there is additional information that needs to be very aware of, and I'd like to also comment on. So, Nastis in this project, yes, you've heard, I sat as a commission, heard this item. And at that time, I also was very, very much involved in staff's work, raising a substantial amount of questions about the ability of this property to, to essentially accommodate issues. Land use is what we are dealing with, not social services, not funding, not politics. We are here before you with our analysis about land use. But I do believe that it's important for you to be fully informed. There's a lot that's come out, sets the apartments, make sure that condition. And I sat as a commission, questions about the ability of this property to accommodate issues were really being considered in a manner in which we were able to establish compatibility. At that time, it was, I believe, a condition, since it became something else because the internal controls changed. At the time that I was hearing this, I had questions with regard to traffic impacts. While it is not required that a traffic analysis be provided, I asked that a traffic analysis be completed so that we could respond to the issues that have been raised by those who are extremely concerned, and those that quite frankly are in opposition in this case. That traffic studying was a tool to inform me as a sitting planning commission, but it was also a tool we were obligated to inform you. So, we took that step. You have a preliminary recommendation for you that includes a recommendation of this time for support. That I would like to make sure that you're aware that that support is based upon a substantial number of operational conditions. Which, in most instances, I would be very leery about applying, because I believe it is very difficult to actually implement all of these conditions that we've attached, conditions of that nature that are dealing with operation. So, as you hear from the project sponsor today, I hope that the project sponsor provides this information. I hope that you, if you're here, would seek to see that information. I think that it is important that you know that while we're recommending approval, it's really based upon the desire to still demonstrate that issues is compatible. And we believe that those conditions are gonna have to be lived up to, and if they cannot be lived up to, then there are going to be some problems. So, I would hope that they would be able to communicate, that they can live with those conditions and actually enforce them, and that you would do all you can to ensure that the conditions can be lived up to. Now, there's been questions about funding on this site. We are not a part of the funding process, we were not consulted, and I am not here to tell you that funding is an issue in your decision, I don't believe that it is. However, in the process of considering funding, questions about land use and the ability of this property to satisfy the needs of the program, as well as do so without affecting any of the neighbor did come up. These land use issues, I think, are somewhat related to the funding process. You should be aware that the funding, still at this stage, is not completed, I think that there are still questions about the location. During that funding process, there was discussion about alternative sites. This was information that we'd have. So, issues about the alternative sites is something that you should be aware of. You should raise questions about the insufficiency of these other sites. Because in our mind, we didn't have much to analyze and compare this site to other sites. And I wish that we did have that opportunity. I think you should be aware of these issues, take this matter up. Finally, there, there, there is confusing information, I think, that has been both submitted to the department and has been out circulated in response to this rather intense question here. here. And those confusing bits of information have to do with occupancy. In the application, and in Mr. Key's work, it's been brought to our attention, and we're talking about thirty-five, forty people on site being served, including staff, I believe. But in other areas, we're hearing other numbers. Uh, and so, I think that it is your task at this stage to really get clear information about the occupancy. You should know that the building department seems to arrive at a maximum occupancy of sixty-one people, where the fire department, who I think also has some role to play in the view of this issue, seems to indicate that there is the ability to occupy this site with up to ninety-five people. The architect for the project seems to indicate that they will provide a maximum occupancy of seventy-three. So, somewhere is clear number. Our concerns have been with the ability of this space to accommodate a large number. With the conditions that we've included, we believe that that is possible. But I would acknowledge that there are substantial questions about the ability to implement and continue to implement throughout the lifetime of the day labor program at that location. You, as a city commissioner, if you believe this is an appropriate position, you should question the ability to accommodate and to implement those conditions of approval. You should take into consideration additional information, which I provided, about questions that are still on there, about additional locations. You should also listen to all that you are going to be presenting today before making a decision. We expect a lot of questions to be asked. With that, again, you have our preliminary recommendation. I hope you understand what it's based on. And I also hope that this additional information is informative to you and helps you in this process. You are ready consistently to answer the questions that you have.
Thank you, Director Green. Before what we're going to do in here, we're going to hear first from the project sponsor. The sponsor will have five minutes to make a statement. And then we're going to hear from the supporters. And I have cards here, and I'll call them in order. And then after all the supporters have spoken, we're going to hear from someone who knew of the DR request for the courses in the city. So, it'll be five minutes allowed for that speaker. And then, uh, those in opposition will have two minutes each to speak. So, with that, I will call the project sponsor, which will make a five-minute presentation in regards to supporting the project.
President, I need to just clarify clearly, those, because we, we have an interpreter here, those people who need an interpreter, I will say that they will take their two minutes, you will give an additional two minutes.
We will give twice the amount of time to those with an interpreter, on the basis that it will probably take about twice the amount of time to say the same thing. May proceed.
Thank you very much. Honorable Chair, honorable commissioners, Director Green, good afternoon. My name is Renee Saucel, and I'm the program director for the San Francisco Day Labor Program, which is a project of La Raza Centro Legal, a community-based social justice center in San Francisco's Mission District. I am here, along with many of these people behind me, to respectfully request that you follow the recommendation of your staff, mainly because the proposed use for the day labor program is a permitted use in the neighborhood. Moreover, we think it is very realistic to comply with the conditions set forth by your staff, and we are committed to comply with those conditions one hundred percent. Rather than giving you a general description of our program, I'd like to address the general concerns raised by your staff and by some of the members in the neighborhood. First of all, neighborhood support. There is overwhelming support by the immediate neighbors, both residential and commercial, for this project. Staff and volunteers canvassed the two-to-three block circumference of our proposed site by going door-to-door and talking to residents. Neighbors signed support letters, which we submitted to your department, which I have here if you need them. Based on those letters, we created a map which reflects the support, which, as you will see, as indicated by the orange marker, we have the majority of the neighbors in that immediate vicinity. Most of today's testimony in opposition to the project live outside this immediate circumference. Issue number two, is this an appropriate location to house the day labor program? Argument number one, it is zoned as NC3, as all of you are aware, which is residential-commercial, residential above commercial, which exactly describes our building. Both neighbors to the east and west of us are commercial, one an appliance business and one a cry school that, just like us, has clients coming in and out. Second reason why it is an appropriate location, the day labor program must be located on Cesar Chavez, which is where the day laborers are located. The day labor program has surveyed the workers over the years, and the vast majority support this location, as you will hear testimony today. It has been the historical congregating site for day laborers over two decades. Workers will tell you today that they will not move off of the Cesar Chavez Street area. Sites that you may have before you today, including sites possibly on Bay Shore or other locations, I can tell you it is not realistic to have the day labor program site. We have considered all of them. Finally, there are other similar businesses in the, in the area. Actually, the most similar one to us is called Labor Ready, a private company that does things similar to what we do. They're right around the corner on Mission 26. They have workers coming in and out, being hired by employers. They have no complaints, or major complaints, as far as we know. Monica Garcia from Mission Housing Development Corporation will address the final two concerns. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners. Um, some neighbors have expressed concern that the new site is not sufficient in large for the day labor program purposes. And to explain why the site is sufficient, a re-discussion of the structure of program services and scheduling is in order. At its current location, four hundred and thirty square feet, the program serves between seventy-five to ninety people per day, spread out over the course of the six-and-a-half hours it's open. Program services are mostly on a drop-in basis. Some persons stop in for five minutes, others stay for one and a half hours. But although day laborers do come for services, they don't hang out at the, at the center, and they're not high on the job list because their priorities for the work. Program's highest volume hours are usually between seven and nine, when the average is between thirty to forty, thirty-four hundred people. And the proposed site, uh, through credit to the Travis, is eleven hundred eighty-five square feet. As you can see, with this service schedule, uh, it's a little bit small, but I believe you have under the packet. It explains how the program is great over the course of the days, but there's not too many people at the same time. Um, the program anticipates serving more laborers. Several potential future growths are also analyzed, and the new site has increased capacity for this. There's also, uh, there's a traffic consultant here we had, and he is here to answer any questions regarding the traffic.
Okay, now, at this point, I'm going to call the names of those who appear to be wanting to speak in favor of the proposal. And you'll have two minutes each. If the translator is needed, it will be four minutes. And the first speaker is Bruce Allison.
I'm talking, uh, Mr. President, in favor of this. Uh, they had a whole support of the Living Ways Coalition, all members, and with this will also bring dignity and honor to the laborers and bring down the crime of urination and stuff, because the people who'll be in the building were safe and sufficient for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anna Marie Loyah. All right, she's coming up. The next one after that will be Sandra Bianco, and then Tino Mendoza.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Anna Maria Loyah. I'm the executive director of La Raza Centro Legal, the agency that runs and operates the day labor program. And I'm here today to focus specifically on the issue of how we arrived at this particular site, because it took, it was many years of struggle to get to this particular site. When the day labor program was first founded about thirteen years ago, there was controversy about where it should be located. So, it was located at Franklin Square Park, um, as a temporary site while something better was found. When we adopted the program about two and a half years ago, actually now about three years ago, the program was still located at those trailers, and by this time, the trailers were dilapidated, falling apart. And we were told by the mayor's office, by the board of supervisors, and by day laborers themselves, that our priority for us was to find a new site. The first site we found was a huge building on Cesar Chavez Street, a boat building, big yellow building, huge, immense, far too expensive for us to be able to rent alone, and also just incredibly, incredibly huge. Through the help of Mission Economic Development Association and Mission Housing Development Corporation, we were providing co-tenants, but the broker of that site and the owner of that site informed us that the city would need to act as a master tenant in order for us to be able to move in. When that wouldn't work for the city to be a master tenant for a nonprofit combined with commercial entities, we began looking for a new site. We found another one, the EDD Building, where the city's already the master tenant, and were, um, applied to move into that site, but because the owner feared that day laborers may scare away the tenants in that building, again, we were denied, um, the ability to move to that site. So, then the mayor's staff met with us and asked us to find something more humble, that we're going to big, to find a smaller site, more affordable, that wouldn't require so much city intervention, that wouldn't require city, so much city funds, or for the city to be the tenant.
Thank you.
And that's how we found the site. Thank you.
Okay, Sandra Bianco, followed by Tino Mendoza, and then Maria Ramirez.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Bianco. I'm principal of the建筑学设计Architect of Record for the Day Labor Program, also an associate professor of Architecture and Cultural Studies in California College of Arts and Crafts. Um, some of the pragmatics, the values that I want to point out very quickly are the improved facade that is much more appropriate in terms of scale and material to Cesar Chavez and Sixth Lane Boulevard. Upgraded, uh, we went prior, come back. Upgraded structural, mechanical, and electrical systems, improved fire exiting via the ram connecting both levels of the building. The new storefront also includes a wider street door. Accessibility would be improved as the path to entry, as will the restrooms and doubling up of the accessible project area. In terms of the symbolic value of this proposal, and as a respected member of the local professional and academic architectural community, I share with my colleagues the overwhelming opinion that San Francisco should be a pioneer in acknowledging urbanistically and architecturally an economic shift that is taking place across the country in every major American city. The day laborers are here to stay. Our construction industry is highly dependent on them. The day laborers deserve a decent recognizable home in their commonly acknowledged territory, which is Cesar Chavez. As a former Bernal Heights resident, I'm all for coexistence and for preserving the cultural and economic diversity, crucial to the continued existence of the mission. Commissioners, when you're ready to reach a decision regarding this project, keep in mind that the proposed new home of the day labor program is about providing visibility and dignity to hard-working members of our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Tito Mendoza. Followed by Tino Ramirez, and then Larry Callen.
We look very interested in Mendoza. And it's about the legal program.
Yes. Both of you need to speak into the microphone. So, after he speaks, then you need to, that's why I want to give you more time, make sure that they get their proper, proper time.
En lo personal, apoyo al presidente, administración del programa de labor, me ha ayudado mucho tanto a mí como mis compañeros.
As an individual, I, um, backed the proposal because helped me and my companions a great deal.
And my fellow workers have been helping greatly in obtaining jobs.
Most of us approve the change to the building on Cesar Chavez.
Because we think that the building has to be located in Cesar Chavez.
Because the workers have been there, are there, and will be there always.
Regardless of where you might assign a building.
Employers know that the place to find workers is on Cesar Chavez.
And I would like to add. It's in all departments.
There's always a minority.
Who are against. I would like to ask you with all due respect. Most of us want the building on Cesar Chavez. Again, with all due respect, I would like to request. With that, could you do not take into consideration the opinion of the minority?
Yeah. We have no applause, or we have no outbursts in the body of the committee, because the statements that are being brought forth in the audience, thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Maria Ramirez. Okay, if she isn't here, the next speaker is Larry Callen.
Larry Callen.
Good afternoon, my name is Larry Callen. I'm with the property management department that manages the property. And I'm here to give you enough that the owner supports this program, and all three candidates that live in the building support this program. The owners had, uh, other people that wanted to, but this program, but it felt this would be a good place to put the program and get the people from Cesar Chavez. So, we're here to support it.
Thank you. The next speaker is GW Frederick, followed by Paul Paulet Budrow.
He's outside, Fred.
Okay, GW, we can wait a second. GW Frederick Paulet Budrow. After that, it's going to be Martin Rodriguez.
GW Frederick?
Why don't we go ahead with Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez, why don't you go ahead first?
My name is Martin Rodriguez.
My name is Martin Rodriguez. One more member of the San Francisco Day Labor Program. I come here to express the need that the planning commission. Grant us, uh, the permits to do the repairs to the building. That we need in order to install our offices. Because of the trailers that we occupy right now, we are very uncomfortable. We don't have the necessary services that human beings require. And that is why we are here today. To continue the struggle for what workers really need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker would be GW Frederick, followed by Paul Budrow, and then...
I am declaring in favor of the day workers in Cesar Chavez.
Este, para que salga del edificio.
So that they are run to that building.
De Labor Program, que está en Cesar Chavez.
For the Labor Program that is located in Cesar Chavez.
Y sé que este va a ser muy beneficioso para ellos.
It would be greatly beneficial to them.
Va a poder ayudar a sus familias.
They would be able to help their families.
A sus hijos.
Their children.
Este, tendrán más estabilidad, un lugar más seguro.
They will obtain more stability as well as a safe place.
Un seguro, un lugar seguro donde ellos puedan trabajar, este va.
A safe place for them to obtain more jobs.
Más estable.
More stability.
Nada, les va a permitir.
It's not going to be prejudicial to anyone.
Por el contrario, este se van a beneficiar.
On the contrary, any of them.
Este, pues eso es todo, este yo los apoyo y eso es lo que les agradezco.
And it's all going to say, I back them, and I hope they do not want this question.
Tanto para la colectiva de la mujeres, por favor, la presta atención.
It's also going to be very helpful to the women's collective.
Y eso es todo.
And so.
Thank you.
Thank you. G.W. Frederick is next, followed by Paul Paulette Budrow, Terry Molina, and Francisco Galindo.
I've been an employer, employer, and hire people for about twelve years from the Labor Program. And I have been a little bit upset about the conditions there, because first there was just one trailer, and it was always crowded, and then there were the second trailer. And I just feel like it's not very dignified for people to have to be housed in that kind of situation. Also, I've seen a lot of workers on the streets, especially around Cesar Chavez, and they are actually at traffic, probably. And I think by being in a building, that eliminates one, I don't do that, I used to drive by there and wonder if I was ever going to hit anybody. And also, it was perhaps a temptation to do other things than to look for work. So I think that should be taken into account. I'm all for a building to house the people where they'll have facilities, other than some outhouse or apartment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Paulette Budrow, please. Paul Paulette Budrow. Terry, Terry.
Steve Marketing Director is pro. He's against the name. So this one, Pedro Rosas, did you call Pedro Rosas?
No, I called. Paul Paulette Budrow. All right, let's go on to the next one. Terry Molina, and then Francisco Galindo, and then Francisco Herrera, and then Nina Ramirez.
Hola, mi nombre es Teresa Molina. Muy buenas tardes.
My name is Teresa Molina. Good afternoon.
Bueno, yo vengo representando al grupo de Day Labor Program.
I come here to represent the group of the day laborers program.
O sea que yo vengo a apoyarlos porque yo creo que es muy necesario el edificio.
I've come here to back them up because I feel that it's very important to have that building.
Para que ellos puedan estar en un lugar estable y que puedan obtener sus trabajos sin estar en la calle.
So that they can be in a stable place and obtain their jobs without having to be out in the street.
Yo pienso que ellos ya lo merecen tenerlo porque ellos trabajan muy duro y aportan sus taxes y todo.
I believe they deserve to have this because they work very hard and they contribute with their taxes and everything.
Y yo pienso que el lugar más adecuado sería en Cesar Chavez porque ellos por muchos años han permanecido ahí.
And I believe the most adequate place would be on Cesar Chavez because for many years they have been there.
Y ellos, como les digo, por muchos años han luchado día a día para sacar dinero para sus necesidades.
And again, I repeat that every day for many, many years, they have struggled very hard to obtain a living.
Por eso yo pienso que sería bueno que ya les hagan su edificio.
That is why I think it would be a very good idea for them to have their own building.
Y se los agradeceríamos mucho si hicieranlo más pronto posible.
We would be very grateful if this took place as soon as possible.
Es todo lo que te digo por ahora, y muchas gracias.
That is all I have to say for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Francisco Galindo, followed by Francisco Herrera and Nina Ramirez.
I inform that Francisco Galindo is not here. This is Mr. Francisco Herrera.
Bueno, buenas tardes, señoras y señores.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Soy un miembro de la comunidad de la misión.
I am a member of the Mission Street Community.
Y voluntario con el programa de Labor Program por trece años.
For thirteen years, I have been a volunteer with the program for day laborers.
Desde el comienzo, quisimos tener un centro en la calle Cesar Chavez de todos los jornaleros.
From the very beginning, we wanted to have a center located on Cesar Chavez Street for all the day laborers.
En 1989, convencimos al supervisor Jim Gonzales y al supervisor José Medina.
In 1989, we were able to convince supervisors Gonzales and Medina.
Y nos apoyaron con dinero.
They backed us up with funds.
Pero nos forzaron a estar en el parque Franklin Square Park.
But they forced us to install ourselves in Franklin Square Park.
Y tenemos trece años buscando un local en la calle Cesar Chavez.
And now it has been thirteen years since we have been looking for a site on Cesar Chavez.
En la iglesia San Antonio, que está en Folsom y Cesar Chavez.
At St. Anthony's Church, which is located at Folsom and Cesar Chavez.
Hay un grupito de seis mujeres que se levantan a las tres de la mañana para cocinar para los señores comida caliente.
There is a group of six women who arise at three a.m. every single day to prepare hot food for the day workers.
Y a las seis de la mañana todos los domingos celebramos misa también en San Antonio con los jornaleros.
And at six in the morning, every single Sunday, we celebrate a mass at that particular church, St. Anthony's, with all the day workers.
Tenemos el apoyo de la iglesia San Antonio, la iglesia San Pedro.
We have the backing of both the churches of St. Anthony and St. Peter.
La iglesia Misión, Misión Presbyteriana.
The Presbyterian Mission Church.
Y la iglesia Santa María, Santa Marta.
The Church of Saint Mary and Saint Martha.
Y la iglesia del buen samaritano episcopal.
And the Episcopal Church of the Good Samaritan.
Somos vecinos que apoyamos la estancia de este lugar y la vemos como muy necesaria y nos ha costado trece años llegar a este momento.
We are residents, neighborhood residents. We have been struggling for the past thirteen years to help these people, and we back them.
Por favor, apóyenos, por favor, denos el permiso de abrir nuestro centro en la calle Cesar Chavez, 3358, Cesar Chavez, gracias.
Please give us your backing, please give us your approval, please make the use of this building, thirty-three hundred bucks of Cesar Chavez for the day workers.
Va a dar servicios a la gente.
It is going to furnish services to the people.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nina Ramirez, followed by Lori McKenzie, and.
Nina Ramirez.
Excuse me, just a second, and Lila Purlich, and then Warren Mar.
I live on 26th and Cap, and I am here today to support the Day Labor Program to move in the building on Caesar Chavez, because they deserve a dignified workplace. This use is a permitted use in the neighborhood by the zoning code, thank you.
Next speaker, Lori McKenzie.
Good afternoon, my name is Lori McKenzie, and I live 1088 Cap Street on 26th and Cap. I'm a neighbor, I've been there for thirteen years. And I'm here to support the placement of the building on Caesar Chavez. I think that it won't cause any traffic problems because most of the people who use the service don't have cars, so, and also to probably improve traffic problems from getting some people off the street on Caesar Chavez. And I think it'll be an improvement to our neighborhood to have a center there and for the neighborhood people to be able to work for the Day Labor Program, improving some problems that we have in our neighborhood also. So, and I also think that the day laborers deserve a dignified place to gain access to services and the things that the Day Labor Program offers.
Thank you. Lily Purlich, Warren Mar, Howard Wallace, Mauricio Vela.
Good afternoon, President of the Community, members of the Commission, Director Green, and members of the audience. My name is Mauricio Vela, and the executive director of the Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. We have a dues-paying membership of over eight hundred members of Bernal Heights residents. I also live in Bernal Heights, and my parents and my siblings and my nephews and nieces have lived there on Thirty First Street for over forty-five years, and we all support the Day Labor Program, being on Cesar Chavez. I'm here tonight to express both my support and the support of the Neighborhood Center for the San Francisco Day Labor Program. I have been involved with the program since its inception as a former advisory board member and a user of the services provided. I've always found the workers in the program to be excellent and enjoy contributing to the workers and their families. The Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center has worked as a partner with Central Liga de la Raza for over fifteen years, providing free community legal services to our senior citizens, our youth, our tenants, and our families. We have always found Central Liga to be responsible, reliable, and an asset to the mission and Bernal Heights community. At our annual community congress in June 2001, our membership voted to support the San Francisco Day Labor Program. And in May of 2002, our board of directors received the presentation from the San Francisco Day Labor Program and the project sponsor regarding the proposed site at 3358 Chavez. The motto that is here before you was shared with the board members, questions were asked and answered, and the board of the Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center voted in support of the Day Labor Program through their request for the Cesar Chavez site. At our congress in June 2002, the membership ratified the vote of our board of directors. The Bernal Heights Board sees the men and women of the program as members of the mission and Bernal community. They are our neighbors, our relatives, and our friends. These workers have a right to be on the street. Please support the Day Labor Program through their request and staff recommendation. The program belongs on Cesar Chavez Street.
Thank you. We're going to ask these names when we're done. Lily Purlich, Warren Mar, Howard Wallace. They don't seem to be here, must be in the other room. Okay, we'll put them to the side, we'll go on to Donald Brannon, Enrique Solgado, Ray Hall, Ray Martin Del Campo.
Muy buenas tardes, Francisco Martin Del Campo, un organizador orgulloso, de 790, miembro del Comité Executivo de San Francisco de la Causa, y presidente electo de la CCA.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, this is Martin Del Campo. I am a proud organizer for San Francisco.
Yeah.
May I? Why don't you speak English?
No, I'm.
Just have just two minutes.
No, but, con superviso, yo quiero que mis compañeros reconocen y escuchen lo que yo voy a decir.
With your permission, I want my companions to understand and recognize what I am going to say.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
How long have I been doing this? Si usted gusta, yo puedo traducir. Pero esta decisión de.
The purpose, yeah, time is moving, and the purpose of this is for the commissioners to hear. May I? If I should. I'm taking. The purpose of this is for the commissioners to hear testimony. And if you can speak in English, and we don't need to have the extra two minutes for the translator, you can tell your friends what you said later. Go ahead and speak for us. Please speak for us.
Me gustaría avisar a todos que yo estoy aquí en sobredinámida y representando el movimiento de laboral de San Francisco con los hermanos queridos inmigrantes del Day Labor Program. Segundo punto, yo estoy aquí para tocar el tema del hiring hall. Aquí en esta ciudad siempre han hablado que hay problemas cuando hay hiring hall, pero no más no es cierto. Aquí en esta ciudad hemos tenido un hiring hall de los law enforcement, y ha sido un éxito, ha creado y derasco a través de todo este, la ciudad. Finalmente, nosotros en el sindicalismo reconocemos que cuando nosotros queremos mejorar nuestras vidas, siempre los poderosos vienen a dividirnos por razas, por este, de ser hombre o mujer. Y nosotros como sindicalistas decidimos estas cosas de una manera de en práctica. Muchas gracias, me gustaría ver que tenemos una ciudad más adelante a donde las lenguas y las idiomas todos sean respetadas. Gracias.
Thank you.
The interpreter requests that the opponent could come and help her reconstruct what he has said. I declare myself unable to repeat his entire speech from memory. I have taken some notes. He is here to represent the labor movement in San Francisco. The second point is about the subject of hiring home, which has obviously been a success in the past. And finally, he wants to resume, he declared that whenever matters touch upon labor, there are differences of social class that are brought to bear upon these subjects, and he's here to back his fellow workers to obtain the backing and the services that they need.
Um, he would like the city henceforth to always respect the language differences. If not here today, then at all future times that this board convenes, and other city bodies should respect the language differences of the opponents.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, next speaker, Donald Brannon. Okay, Enrique Solgado, Ray Hall, Joe Figueres. When we get him, let's go on to the next one. Luis Granados, followed by Eric Caso.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Luis Granados. I'm the executive director of the Mission and Bernal Association. This is my daughter, An Socoro. I'm a planner, I'm a modern planner, I have a master's in planning.
The interpreter requests that the opponent come and help her reconstruct what he has said. I declare myself unable to repeat his entire speech from memory. I have taken some notes. He is here to represent the labor movement in San Francisco. The second point is about the subject of hiring home, which has obviously been a success in the past. And finally, he wants to resume, he declared that whenever matters touch upon the labor, there are differences of social class that are brought to bear upon these subjects. And he's here to back his fellow workers to obtain the backing and the services that they need. He would like the city henceforth to always respect the language differences. If not here today, then on all future times that this board convenes and other city bodies should respect the language differences of the opponents.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, Donald Brannon. Okay, Enrique Solgado, Ray Hall, Joe Figueres. When we get him, let's go on to the next one. Luis Granados. Followed by Eric Casada.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Luis Granados. I'm the Executive Director of the Mission and Community Association. This is my daughter, Anzokoro. I'm a planner, I'm a noted planner, I have a master's in planning. I've been a planner for fifteen years. And I can tell you that this is, this kind of use on Army on Cesar Chavez is the appropriate use. There are no planning issues to be discussed. I think that if this were any other project, or this building, or any other constituency, it would improve without any controversy.
Okay, order placed, he's speaking, no one else. Thank you.
So, so let me put you to rest. I mean, you can ask the planning director, you can ask the staff person. I think they've done a really good job. I think the process has been delayed, but there are no planning issues here. I'm just like, this is, for whatever reason, the city seems to be intent on harassing this group. This follows the threatening of their funding. This follows the harassment of the laborers on Cesar Chavez. This is another process in the city of harassment. And, you know, the bottom line is that these guys are making five dollars an hour. I mean, that's all they're trying to do. I mean, they're, they're, the problem, perceived problem is loitering. And so, focusing on that, the Raza de la Raza has come up with a provenance solution to address those concerns, but the, um... But people, people, people would rather not listen to that. People, people would, they don't want a solution. What they would like is for people who look like them, or people who look like me, or people who look like my daughter to go away. I mean, that is the bottom line. I think the problem is not about the building, because again, there's no planning issue here. It's about racism. There are no planning issues here again. So, I ask you to please approve the project and stop the nonsense.
I would ask speakers to address the land use issue if possible here in the work that is in front of us. That's what the issue is, appropriateness of usage. Okay, next speaker is Eric Casada, Luis Granados. Yeah, Luis is first, and then Luis spoke.
Thank you. Well, my name is Joe Figueres, I represent the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement. I'm sorry, did you put in a card?
Yeah, he's right.
I just wanted to make sure that you were there. Okay, one of the issues that came to our attention, and we've been organizing on this issue for quite so many years already. It's been a few years that we've been working on this issue. And now it's on your hands. And I believe that it's time for you guys to make a decision. And actually, bring us together. A brother reported me, mentioned the fact about San Francisco being a community of all different races, different languages. Therefore, la Raza de la Raza and the laborers represent that. And we're just another community that work here very hard. We are needed in this country, as well as all of us know about that. Therefore, I'm here to ask you to push this project forward and to not allow anybody to side, sidetrack you for making this decision that will be the positive decision for the day laborers. And on that, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric Casada, Antonio Diaz, Jason Alexander.
Just really quickly, it'd be really helpful if you said the names twice, because it's allowed in the other room.
Okay.
So that's why it's taking the people longer to get it. Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Eric Casada. Today I'm here as a neighbor of Cesar Chavez Street. I've lived over thirteen years of black from Cesar Chavez, Cesar Chavez, and probably served in the past for several years in the advisory board. As been mentioned, this is a struggle that's been going on for many, many years, and we're so close today to fulfilling a dream that's been going on with lots of struggling, a lot of work, for many months and months, just on this site, not to mention the years spent on attempting to get other sites. Unfortunately, you know, I've stood before this body and many times been opposing projects in front of this body. Today we're here strongly recommending that the recommendations by the department be heard by this commission and that the project be accepted. The past five years, we've seen so many types of developments happen in our neighborhood that have not met the needs of the vast majority of the sectors that live in the mission. Today you're here with an opportunity to put forward a development that actually is going to benefit a large sector and a very needy sector of our community at this point in terms of the site for this program. As a land use issue, this is clearly an allowable use. And as a neighbor, I can only say that this can only help and improve the situation after nearly twenty years of not having a site, that we could begin to have a site. And finally, I'd just like to say that it is only for political reasons at this point that this project will be denied. It is only based on some late eleventh-hour organizing around political issues and differences that you will be given a reason to turn this project down. And I sincerely hope that you will not do that and further divide our community on this, because there's great, great unity around this issue, as you've heard many of the speakers already. And I would hate for this to go back to the community and continue to have this be a divisive struggle in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the names twice on suggestion here. So the next speaker is Antonio Diaz. Antonio Diaz, after that Jason Alexander, Jason Alexander, and Dr. Rajiv Batia, Dr. Rajiv Batia. And then Edgar Calo, Edgar Calo. Okay, Mr. Diaz.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Antonio Diaz. I'm the Director of a community organization in the Mission District by the name of Poder. We've been very active over the last several years on land use and planning issues in our neighborhood and have been working with planning department staff and neighborhood residents on the community planning effort that's underway for the, for the Mission District. As such, I'd like to state my, and our organization's strong support for this project and urge you to follow staff's recommendation to approve the, the project. We've come to learn a lot about land use issues and zoning issues over the past several years, sometimes unfortunately under duress. And as a previous speaker said, it's enlightening to be here and be in favor of a project and really try to get a sense, or give a sense to you of how important these kinds of issues are for us and why this, supporting this project is, is important. One of the things that I do want to mention is that in terms of what was stated earlier about approving the project with conditions, I must state that the Raza de la Raza, the project sponsor, is among one of the most respected organizations in the Mission District. And any conditions that could be attached to this, I would assure you that they have the capacity, the ability, the smarts, and the integrity to be able to, to meet those, those conditions. I am wanting to convey the support that we have for this project and also to indicate that you'll hear later on some opposition. But I think that it's clear to understand there's broad support in the neighborhood for this. There's no planning issues or land use issues here. This is an important site for, for workers on Cesar Chavez, and I urge you, strongly urge you, to support the project.
Thank you. Jason Alexander, followed by Dr. Batia and Mr. Calo.
Good afternoon, my name is Jason Alexander. I'm a longtime resident of San Francisco and I hire workers through the day labor program on several occasions. I've always found them to be very helpful, very friendly, very respectful, and I have tremendous respect for them and what they do. I do think they're a part, part of our local culture and economy. And what I love best about the program is that I simply call in to the program by phone, and the workers have always come out to my site. I think the building is a great idea. I urge you to support a day labor program building at this site.
Thank you. Dr. Batia.
Thank you Commissioners, I'm Dr. Rajiv Batia. I'm with the Department of Public Health. I direct our Environmental and Occupational Health Section, and also Professor at the University of California. I'm here to talk about how public health could be served by the location of the day labor program on Cesar Chavez. The day laborers, day labor is a longstanding economic practice. It's been around since the time of cities. Day laborers however work in some of the most demanding and hazardous jobs and some of the most demanding and hazardous conditions. Institutions by and large have failed day laborers in terms of occupational health and safety. They don't, aren't provided with health and safety protection on the job. The institutions such as OSHA don't have the means or the abilities to provide them, given the fact that they're not even recorded as laborers in, in their data systems. And injured day laborers are less likely to be able to use their legal benefits, including workers' comp. Recognizing, recognizing this, the department provided, started providing health services to the day laborers thirteen years ago. Around three years ago, we expanded our program to provide health and safety training. This was done with OSHA, the State Department of Health Services, and the University of California virtually. So we can be at least assured we won't have OSHA violations at this site in the future. We've been conducting training in the early morning with the day laborers around 6:00 a.m., but we've realized that one of the biggest barriers for our providing services is the distance from the program to where day laborers congregate. It's a very well-recognized point in public health is if you bring the services to where the people are, you don't try to get the people to come to where the services are. It never works. The move to Cesar Chavez would enhance health in the following ways. It would increase workers' accessibility in the health services. It would improve the safety of, of conditions that the workers work in. It would improve pedestrian safety. It would improve public sanitation. It would decrease the risk of violence to laborers resulting from attempted robberies. And DPH as a service provider will help ensure the conditions that have been stipulated.
Thank you, Dr. Next speaker, Edgar Calo, Pablo Rodriguez, Sister Anne Marie Sullivan, Max Toth. Edgar Calo, Pablo Rodriguez, Sister Anne Marie Sullivan, Max Toth. Sister, if you want to come in first, it's fine. Let's see if the others.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I am Sister Anne Marie Sullivan, Sister of the presentation. I'm an ESL coordinator and teacher at Good Samaritan Fairland Resource Center at 25th and Petraero. For the past three and a half years, our community has provided breakfast for the workers every Tuesday, and we're one of the groups that provide breakfast during the week out of St. Anthony's area on Chavez. During the, of these years, it has become clear to us that a building on Cesar Chavez would be a great, would do a great deal for the day laborers and for the workers, day labor program for the workers. A building on Cesar Chavez would help with safety issues, would ensure more justice for the workers, would provide a place to meet, and so much more. A building would be a win-win for all concerned. The existing space on Hampshire is too far from the area where the workers wait for their jobs. Since this has been the day labor area for over thirty years, it stands to reason that services and job opportunities should be closely aligned. During the past year, we have worked with Rene Salcedo and La Raza de la Raza. We have been impressed by the way that the program has been directed and administered. It seems that lately, the building and the workers have been used as pawns of the political activities. We're here today to serve the workers by working to move the building, to move into the building on Cesar Chavez. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Edgar Calo, Pablo Rodriguez, Max Toth, Sylvia Alvarez Lynch, David Rodriguez, Hector Valdez. Let me go through that list again, let's see if we've got anybody here. Edgar Calo, Pablo Rodriguez, Max Toth, Sylvia Alvarez Lynch, David Rodriguez, Hector Valdez.
Muy buenas tardes, Comision de Planación, mi nombre es Hector Valdez.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, my name is Hector Valdez.
Por más de siete años fui de labor, y por último año he trabajado medio tiempo como se ha ido.
For seven years I was a day laborer, and for the last year I have worked half-time as manager.
Durante este tiempo el day labor me ha servido de apoyo al igual que a todos los jornaleros en la calle.
During all this time, the day labor program has been of great support to me as well as to all the workers in the street.
Primero para conseguir un trabajo digno y después para ayudar a mis compañeros jornaleros.
First to obtain dignified work and then to help my companions, the day workers.
Por más de seis meses permanecí en la calle Cesar Chavez, pero desgraciadamente no había quien ahí que nos apoyara.
For more than six months, I remained on Cesar Chavez Street, but unfortunately there was no one there who could support us.
No sentíamos el apoyo porque los jornaleros desgraciadamente éramos explotados por contratistas y en ocasiones ni nos pagaban.
We did not feel any support because unfortunately the day laborers were oftentimes exploited by their employers and oftentimes not paid.
Al pasar esto busqué otro lugar y fue cuando llegué al day labor program.
Since this was happening, I looked for another place, and that's how I arrived at the day laborers program.
Me di cuenta que este programa contaba con el apoyo legal para los trabajadores y los jornaleros de la Raza Centro Legal.
That's when I realized that this program had the backing of la Raza Centro Legal, the law, and other city programs.
Yo considero justo tener una oficina del day labor program en la calle Cesar Chavez y ha sido el lugar de los jornaleros por décadas.
I think it is only fair that there be an office on Cesar Chavez Street for the day laborers program, because that has been their home to obtain jobs for many years.
La mayoría de los trabajadores optan la oficina en la calle Cesar Chavez.
Most workers back the placing of an office in Cesar Chavez Street.
Como jornalero, quiero tener un lugar de apoyo en la calle Cesar Chavez, donde colegas han sido, han estado los jornaleros en busca de trabajo.
As a day worker myself, I want to see the creation of an office on Cesar Chavez Street, which has been traditionally for many, many years the site where day workers find their jobs.
Apoyamos a la Raza Centro Legal para la administración de nuestra oficina, porque la Raza Centro Legal siempre ha defendido los derechos de los jornaleros y los inmigrantes.
We back that la Raza Centro Legal should become the administrator of our office, because they have always been there to defend our rights and to see that we are protected.
Lamentamos el hecho de que algunos trabajadores han sido manipulados por gente que trabaja en alcantía.
We are very sorry to see that some workers have been manipulated by people who work in city hall.
Y que salen contra del programa por el apoyo de la administración de la Raza Centro Legal.
And who are against the program being administered by la Raza Centro Legal.
Trabajadores que vienen a resolver problemas internos ya sabiendo que la ropa sucia se lava en casa.
Workers who come to try to solve internal problems knowing full well that dirty linen should be laundered at home.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ellie Kruler, Eduardo Palomo, Iris Villowitz, Fran Taylor, Richard Marquez, Steve Roy. I'll call the names again. Ellie Kruler, Eduardo Palomo, Iris Villowitz, Fran Taylor, Richard Marquez, Steve Roy.
San Francisco, yes.
General, the land use of the planning commission.
Este, mi nombre es Eduardo Palomo, starting of the day labor program.
My name is Eduardo Palomo, I'm a starter of the labor program.
Este, yo fui jornalero por cuatro años y...
I was a day laborer for four years and?
No, yo me equidad por cerca de cuatro años estoy trabajando como trabajador de staff. Y estoy a cargo de Cesar Chavez.
And now for the past four years, I have been working as a clerk in the program in Cesar Chavez.
Y este trabajo, yo pienso que si unos dos años necesita dar un buen más a todos los trabajadores y necesitamos tener el edificio, ahí en la calle... y necesitamos tener el edificio ahí en la calle Cesar Chavez para poder darles más servicio y estar al alcance tanto de los vecinos como de los trabajadores, nos van a tener un diálogo más cercano.
As a staff member, I feel it would be very important for us to have an office right there on Cesar Chavez Street where we could render these services, and that this would be beneficial not only for the workers but for the neighbors.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker, Ellie Krueger.
Hi, my name is Ellie Krueger, and I'm a job developer. I do job development with the Day Labor Program. Part of what my job is, I might have a mistake, part of what my job is to figure out what makes our program special and why employers would want to use our program. For the last two years that I've worked with our program, what we've found is one of the big selling points of our program is the fact that we send workers to employers. We send workers to employers. Pretty much every single piece of outreach material we have, whether it's ready for businesses, for renters, for property owners, we say, "We will send workers to you with as little as an hour's notice," and they love it, and employers love it. In the last two years, we've converted virtually all of our players into dispatches, so that when we get a phone call coming into our offices for same-day job, we talk to the employer, we get their information. Within ten minutes, we've gotten a worker based on the requirements of the employer and the worker-created system of job dispatch, and we give straight to the worker on a big public transportation map where in the city that job is, what bus they take. We usually give them a bus token, they go on their way, they get there within an hour. It's like Domino's Pizza, the humane. So, I just want to emphasize that for all of you. I think some people are imagining that with the Day Labor Program, we're moving to Cesar Chavez Street, there's going to be this huge influx of employers at our trailers. We see maybe one or two employers walking in, at least for me when I'm at the trailers, I see one or two walking in a week. And we prefer to have employers' calls and market it that way, and that's the way it's going to stay. It's easier for the staff, it's more ecological, has cars, and it's what the workers perform as well. So I just want to emphasize that to you, and I hope that you guys will let us move ahead with this, because it's really hard to have a professional organization getting as many employers as we need when we're in two trailers and not in the place where the workers are, in a building, and specifically in 3358 Cesar Chavez Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Iris Villowitz, followed by Fran Taylor, Richard Marquez, Steve Williams, Mariana Nettoro.
I've been involved in the daylaborers' years-long attempts to get an office in Cesar Chavez between Ryan and Mission Street. Because I'm a neighbor, I live on 26th Street and Ryan, and because I'm a nurse and I've had patients who are daylaborers, giving you some understanding of their work situation, how it affects the physical environment, how it...
Sorry. In the past three years, I've found La Raza Centro Legal committed not only to the dignity and the safety of the daylaborers, but also to working with neighbors. I've been impressed with the job La Raza has done administering the Day Labor Program. The daylaborers are an integral part of the mission, and I wholeheartedly support their office at 3358 Cesar Chavez. The building requires only minimal resi-- as well as a health center for weekly doctor visits. This will enable daylaborers to see a doctor, go to a class, and find work, all in the same immediate area, not to mention use a bathroom, which is a privilege unknown to them right now. Some neighbors argue that the proposed site is too small. These same people have been arguing for years against other sites, even if they were larger and had parking. The daylaborers use public transportation, and this office--
Con los beneficios que brinda, debe de darse los permisos.
In comparison to all the benefits that it will render, the permits should be given.
Yo los exhorto en este momento a modilatar más su decisión y a probar este proyecto que beneficia no solo a los jornaleros, sino a las personas que necesitan los servicios de ellos.
I exhort you at this time to delay no more and to grant the permits that will benefit not only the workers but all the people who use their services.
Y tengan conciencia que la decisión de este momento, que pido Dios ilumine sus cabezas, va a definir la vida de estas personas molestas y trabajadoras. Dios los bendiga, señores.
And please keep in mind, and may the Lord illuminate you as you come to your decision, that the decision that you are going to take tonight is going to make a very big difference in the lives of these people. May God bless you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make one announcement before we proceed. It's now 5:30. We had previously scheduled a special order of business in six. However, we are going to continue on as long as we have to to hear this issue. However, however, we do have a stack of speaker cards in opposition that's about the same size as those who have already spoken in support. So if anyone wishes to voluntarily relinquish their speech, that would be appreciated, but we certainly will respect, right, for anyone whose name is called and wishes to address us to speak. And if anyone can address us in English as courtesy, it just makes the thing move a little bit faster. Obviously, if we need the translation, we'll certainly provide it. So our next speaker is Teresa Molina, Maria Margarín, David Corona, Joaquin Gutierrez, Ellie Krueger, Krueger. She spoke. Okay, second part. Philip Chu, Toby Levine.
Mi nombre es David Corona.
My name is David Corona.
Vengo representando a mis compañeros de la Cesar Chavez.
I come here to represent my coworkers on Cesar Chavez Street.
O sea, ya que, este, la verdad, necesitamos ese servicio más que nada cerca de nosotros, porque nosotros, este, necesitamos que este programa esté cerca de nosotros, porque lo necesitamos allá.
The truth is that we need this program to be near us. It's undeniable that we need the services to be rendered near where we congregate.
Tanto para los servicios, o sea, servicios como el teléfono, tener ese servicio como baño, porque no tenemos muchos servicios allá, ya que, este, ahora sí que los vecinos, al no tener todos esos servicios, se molestan con nosotros.
We need basic services such as telephone and bathrooms, because it's natural that the neighbors around us where we are now should get upset because lacking those services, we must find other solutions.
Ya que nuestros patrones ahí que se nos piden teléfono, y como no tenemos teléfono, nosotros a dónde nos tienen que ir a hacer más tráfico allá a la Cesar Chavez. Si no fuera eso, nosotros nos comunicaríamos con nuestro patrón, y nuestros patrones no habían mucho tráfico allí en la Cesar Chavez.
If we had phones of our own, our potential employees, lawyers, could call us directly. But since we don't, we depend on the telephones of the center. Being able to receive job calls at the center cuts down on the traffic because the employers don't have to go in person to try to hire day workers.
Ya que nuestros patrones ahí que se nos buscan a nosotros ahí mismo para no tener, a dónde comunicarse con nosotros, nos tienen que dar vuelta y vuelta allí, y es lo que se ve que hay mucho tráfico ahí. Con esto, evitaríamos muchos problemas.
With this, with the center, we would avoid a lot of problems because potential employers will not have to drive around and around and around, causing traffic problems trying to hire us.
Por así que, en nombre de mis compañeros que estamos a favor de que nos ayuden con este programa, ya que nos va a beneficiar a muchos, tanto como a nosotros como, este, trabajadores, tanto como a vecinos, como a nuestros patrones, todos vamos a salir beneficiados.
In the name of my coworkers, I want to remind you that all of us are going to benefit, not just the day workers, but our potential employers and the neighborhood. Everyone is going to benefit from having the center there.
Por favor, les suprimamos que nos apoyen en este programa, ya que, pues, son varios años que, en realidad, nosotros estamos muy alejados de lo que es el programa, y pues, ahora sí que, la verdad, tenemos que... Ahí veces, los patrones no nos encuentran, y tenemos que volver a hacer por ahí, por eso no vemos mucha gente.
Please remember that because our employers cannot find us readily where we are away from Cesar Chavez Street, this creates problems. If we were there, it would be much simpler for everyone concerned. And in the name of all my coworkers, I ask you, please, take these things into consideration and give us your support.
Muchas gracias.
I see supervisor Amiano. Would you like to address us on this issue?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the time, and I appreciate your listening skills on this issue. This program is in my district, District Nine, and to be candid, it's not without controversy, but I very much do support this program and have tried to broker many of the intended problems and tried to be conciliatory to both sides. I just want to say that the issue of what is an appropriate site is sometimes in the minds of the beholder and sometimes situational on a daily basis. I have read the report and noticed that in all other circumstances, this would be an appropriate site. But for whatever the reasons, we have decided to look at it a little more closely and with scrutiny. And if that's the way it is, then that's the way it is. However, the history is, there were, and I don't think anyone would argue that this is not the most perfect site, a land use site, but it is an appropriate site. And the history of this is that there were more perfected sites. However, through the efforts of some landlords, then refused to host this program, which was too bad because there was more space involved and there was more parking issues, et cetera, and so forth. So the program is now painted into a corner where the site that they do have, while appropriate, of course, could be better. And historically, there were better sites. So I ask you to keep that in mind when you're making your consideration about this program. And again, I thank you very, very much for that consideration. So thank you very much.
Thank you, supervisor. We have a couple of people who I'm going to call who say they've been here a long time. However, one of them did not mark whether they were in favor or opposed, so that was one reason why they haven't been called yet. And that was Rosa Bella Safron. Oh, I called her. Toby Levine. Okay, sorry. Go ahead first. Toby Levine first, and then... Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Toby Levine, and I'm a resident of the proposed site just about three blocks away. Also been a resident of the Mission District for the past thirty-seven years. I realize that this is very controversial, or maybe it is controversial, it's somewhat controversial subject, but this is a wonderful, wonderful program, and it's something that's needed in the Mission. The site is appropriate. I wouldn't give the thought of the site any more thought because it is going to be just fine. And if in a few years, the program grows and they find that they need more space, then a different site will be found, but this is just fine for the moment, so don't worry about that. I realize that following, there are going to be people who may be opposed to the program, and they may have different ideas for you about the program. And it's my belief that if you can work things out and talk and listen carefully, that all of these issues can be addressed. Nothing has to be put into, you know, cement. So my final point is that I would like to see you support this. There are many, many people here tonight who feel that this is the right thing to do, and I hope that after you've listened to everything, that you will make the finding in favor of the program, being at that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Rosa Bella Safron.
Thank you, Commissioners. I did send two cards in. The first one had all the information, but thank you. My name is Rosa Bella Safron, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Day Labor Program. I was born and raised in San Francisco, and I was born into poverty, and I was raised on Fourteenth and Mission. So I understand, I think, the economic fiber of the Mission. To that end, I have worked for another number of organizations in the Mission. I served on the Board of the Mission Merchants for five years. I served on the Twenty-Fourth Street Revitalization. I served on the Latino Democratic Club. I've served on the Board of Instituto Amigar de la Raza. I was co-chair for the fundraising for the library. I was on the Mayor's Safe Corridor Task Force. I was a part of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Currently, I am the President of the Mission Economic Development Association's Board, and I'm also one of the founding members of the Latino Steering Committee. I sit on other boards, but they're not here in the Mission. I would like to address the land use issues. The proposed use for the Day Labor Program is a permitted use in the neighborhood. And having attended many Planning Commission meetings, I find it just stressful to find that so many conditions have been placed on this site. There are a lot of issues, political issues, that have surrounded this. But the issue that we're here today to discuss is whether this is an appropriate site for the Day Labor Program. You're going to hear a lot of opposition from the neighbors, and I've been at many of those meetings, and they were very contentious. But I would urge you to look at the fact that the traffic, well, the congestion is a non-issue. Once the laborers are in this site, it will do a lot to alleviate the traffic problems. The traffic problems are not caused solely because of the daylaborers. They are caused by speeders, by all kinds of issues that really don't have to do with the daylaborers. The neighborhood supports this move, and the organizations that I belong to support this movement.
Thank you very much.
And it is also part of your planning commission, strategic plan.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Andre Rucker, who did not indicate favor or oppose, so that's why you weren't called to.
Thank you.
Who is speaking, please.
Yeah, I'm with power, and we're here to support the daylabor. But what I see here is a red herring. The issue is, this building has been given a permit to sell alcohol in the premises. During the last fifteen years, there have been bars run out of this premises, selling liquor, putting drunk drivers on the street with a neighborhood with a park right behind it. Now someone has a lease on the building, and they want to put people working on the street. And now we're wasting all this city funding and city time talking about should we permit them. This is a downgrade, and this is a shame and a shame that we would stand here all day talking about can people do work out the building, when if someone with a liquor permit leased the building, they could open up and sell liquor to some drunk driver to run a key over. Come on, man, we're bankrupt, and this is incompetent. I'm not talking about personally anybody, but this is an incompetent city government. We have wasted a lot of money funding the Commissioners, funding their support staff, to talk about a red herring. The building is leased. They want to do something positive. It's good for the community. The purpose of business is the community, and they're doing that. They've been doing it fifteen years, and they didn't have a building. Now they got a place to work out of, and it's a big issue. But if you wanted to put a drunk driver on the street out of that location, my God, you could pay your rent, open up, and do it right away. What is the question here? The answer is right in front of you. Give the people a permit to go to work who's up there in the back office wasting all this city money. You need to turn around and talk to them, because that flag there says, "We've forgotten what we're really all about." Our West, and San Francisco is as far west as you can go, baby. So let's communicate with our hearts, our minds, our characters, because in this city, there's been a trend of bankrupt character for a few years now. We're following New York. New York is not a city San Francisco should follow. San Francisco government needs cities in the United States. We don't follow cities.
Thank you. Okay, Joaquin Gutierrez, Philip Chu, Chu, and... Granados, I can't read the person's name here. Luis Granados, please speak. People filled out both of the cards. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Mi nombre es Joaquin Gutierrez.
My name is Joaquin Gutierrez.
Soy jornalero de la Cesar Chavez de hace varios años.
For several years, I have been a day laborer of the Cesar Chavez.
Hay un grupo que nosotros que vivimos, que sucede ahí, tal vez cuáles son los problemas y las soluciones.
Nobody better than those of us who live and work there know what the problems are and what the solutions are.
El principal problema está en la Chavez.
The main problem is on Chavez Street.
El problema es de que no estamos, no tenemos el apoyo para organizarnos.
The problem is that we don't have the support to organize ourselves.
No tenemos ni siquiera un baño.
We don't even have a bathroom.
No tenemos el apoyo de, de la policía.
We don't have the support of the police.
Eso crea muchos problemas con los vecinos.
That creates a lot of problems with the neighbors.
Con la realidad.
The reality is...
La solución sería...
The solution would be...
Un edificio en la Cesar Chavez.
A building on Cesar Chavez Street.
Nosotros hemos trabajado muy duro.
We have worked very hard.
Y a veces los empleadores que nos quieren pagar.
And sometimes our employers don't want to pay us.
Es por eso que queremos el apoyo del, del edificio.
That's why we want to have the support of our building.
Recordemos que este país es grande.
Let's remember that this is a great country.
Gracias a los inmigrantes.
Thanks to immigration.
Y a la organización.
And organization.
Referente a las cinco o seis personas que están en contra del edificio.
As to the five or six people who are against the building.
Realmente yo no entiendo la situación.
I really do not understand what the issue is.
Eso me lleva a pensar.
That leads me to think.
Que hay un punto oscuro en esa situación.
That there is a dark spot in that situation.
En donde cual posiblemente esté mentira la arcaía.
In which perhaps the city hall is mixed up.
A nosotros nos han ayudado.
We have been helped.
Con hechos.
Facts.
Nos han pagado.
We have been paid.
Gracias al programa de Day Labor.
Thanks to the Day Labor's program.
No con palabras.
Not with words.
En lo que está basando esta pequeña minoría.
On which this small minority is basing itself.
Señores.
Gentlemen, ladies.
Desde cuando la organización crea caos?
Since when has getting organized created chaos?
Hasta cuando se nos va a hacer justicia?
How much do we have to wait for justice?
Ustedes tienen la palabra. Gracias.
You have the word. Thank you very much.
Would ask if we please not react to speakers. Our next speaker is Richard Marquez. Excuse me. Richard, Richard Marquez.
Did you call Philip Chu first?
Yeah, Philip Chu first.
Philip Chu, there you go.
Yes. Then Richard Marquez.
Sure. Hi, I am Philip Chu and I represent the Chinese Legal Association, San Francisco Chinatown. And I'm speaking on behalf of the organization and our membership that we think the Day Labor Program is a good program. It's a benefit not only to its community in the Mission, but also to the city and county of San Francisco at large. And, you know, just on our personal perspective and myself personally, I'm no planning expert. But, you know, we're dealing just within our organization with over six hundred unemployed workers that are looking for organizations like the Day Labor Program that is well organized and well set up to help them find employment. And I think the city's planning commission, as well as the city in general, should do everything in its power to help them get this permit because, you know, we're providing the jobs necessary to, to benefit the entire economy. So, I think on that, I'll leave it to Richard Marquez. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard Marquez. Please be followed by Julio Loyola, I think. Nora Calderón, Carlos Mores.
Primero, le quiero dar las gracias y la bienvenida a los jornaleros de la Cesar Chavez que están aquí con nosotros este día. I first want to begin by thanking the jornaleros at Day Laborers that are here with us from Cesar Chavez Street. My name is Richard Marquez and I'm with the Mission Agenda. And we're, we're a single room occupancy hotel project and we organize with hotel residents that live in the Mission District, particularly the North Mission. I am so proud of this day in so many different ways because finally today, the voices of the excluded are being heard. This program, if you look at the historical overview, has been told that you can't cite yourself here, not there, not even somewhere over the rainbow. I mean, where is this program supposed to be? And if you look at history again, not only is MLK's birthday right around the corner, but Cesar Chavez himself, if he could be resurrected from the grave, would say, "Put the site on the street named after me." In times of terror, in times of war, it appears to me that the San Francisco Day Labor Program has been held hostage. The hostage taking is going on and on. There's so many more valiant voices that have spoken before me and after me that it appeals to what I have to say, but I will say this. This community, our beloved Mission community, one of the oldest historic settlements in this city. And San Francisco is Spanish. It's not Swedish, last time I checked. We have been here, we're not leaving. The organization of the Day Labor Program is built. The huge proportion of the coalition that's just beginning to mount. This decision is a decision you have to make. Give the day laborers, the Day Labor Program, the site that they deserve. The decision has to be made today. There's no more stalling, no more continuances. Give us what we want now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Julio Loyola, Nora Calderón, Carlos Mores, Antonio Gías.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Julio Loyola.
My name is Julio Loyola.
Y soy trabajador del Day Labor Program.
I am a worker of the Day Labor Program.
Estoy aquí con la querida ustedes el permiso para el edificio.
I am here to ask you to grant the permission for the building.
Los que han precedido y los que vendrán tienen fundamentos fuertes y sólidos.
Those who have spoken before me and those who will speak next are doing so on a very solid base.
Así que lo tengo que decirles ahora y lo siguiente, robándole dos palabras de un amigo.
What I want to say now is the one follows and I will steal a couple of words from a friend to quote.
Lo que digo es de puro corazón.
What I say comes from the bottom of my heart.
Es Estados Unidos es conocido como el país de las oportunidades.
The United States is known as the country of opportunity.
Yo estoy viviendo esa oportunidad.
I am living that opportunity.
Y la vivo a través de Day Labor Program.
And I live it through the Day Labor Program.
Y aunque parezca y lo digo, yo les pido a ustedes.
And even though it may seem ironic, I ask of you.
Le den ahora esa oportunidad al Day Labor Program.
Give that opportunity now to the Day Labor Program.
Para que a través de ellos den o brinden más oportunidades a gente que necesita.
So that through it, more opportunities will be given to people who need them. Thank you.
The next speaker, Nora Calderón.
Buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Nora Calderón y soy miembro de Poder, una organización que es compuesta y dirigida por nosotros, la gente obrera y la gente trabajadora.
Good afternoon. My name is Nora Calderón and I am a member of a coalition of workers. I am a member of an organization called Poder. Power in English. It's an organization that is made up and directed by ourselves, the workers.
Ah, y primero, buenas tardes a todos. Le quiero decir al comisionado, quien nos está faltando el respeto cuando nos pide que nos caigamos, que no nos aplaudamos, que no nos reconozcamos, cuando él mismo nos pidió que aplaudiéramos a Tomamiano, nada más porque es supervisor, él no es mejor que nosotros.
I want to say to Mr. Vice President that you are being disrespectful to us when you ask us not to clap, not to make any noises or comments because you yourself asked us to clap when Tomamiano came in and we are no different from him.
Okay, y la razón que estoy aquí es porque soy mujer trabajadora de la clase, pero como todos nosotros somos la mayoría que estamos aquí.
The reason I'm here is because I am a woman worker. I belong to the working class, just like most of the people who are in this room.
Y no es nada que estamos pidiendo que nos regalen el building. Lo necesitamos porque nosotros los trabajadores, todos somos los que sa, somos los que hacemos el trabajo y nosotros sabemos lo que queremos y lo que es mejor para nosotros.
We have not come here to ask for this building to be given to us as a gift. We have come here to request that we get the permit to use it because we, the workers, know what it is that we need and how to solve problems.
Porque este programa de Day Labor es un programa que no solo ayuda a los compañeros hombres jornaleros, sino a nosotros, las madres solteras, para poder obtener un trabajo. A mí me ayudó mucho hace siete años atrás para poder poner un plato de comida en la mesa de nuestros hijos o de nuestras casas.
This program does not just help men workers. It helps women workers too. It helps single mothers like myself. I was greatly helped by this program seven years ago and without it, it would have been impossible to put a plate of food in front of our children every day.
Y también, no solo es para los latinos porque yo alcance cada día en todas las calles de San Francisco y también no solo latinos, somos gente obrera y trabajadora, somos de todas las razas y por lo pronto ese edificio debe de ser dado a nosotros porque no es gratis. Nosotros, con nuestro trabajo, pagamos taxes, hacemos su trabajo de ustedes, limpiamos sus casas. ¿Quién limpia las calles? ¿Quién limpia las yardas? ¿Quién las cocina? ¿Quién andaba la ropa? Nosotros, los que trabajamos en las cinturerías, en los restaurantes, en sus casas, los que limpiamos su yarda. Así que es bien justo que ya nos tienen que dar el building.
The people who are the people who do all the minion jobs, we are the ones who clean the houses, we're the ones who do the yard work, we're the ones who look after the children, who cook in the restaurants, who serve. We are the people that do all this, this labor and it's not only Latinos. There are people of all races and ethnicities who do this type of work. And it is, the time has arrived for us to get the permit to use this building.
Porque es una de las cosas que ustedes tienen que estar conscientes, bien, bien conscientes, que les quede bien claro. No este dinero de ustedes, es nuestro propio dinero, con nuestro propio trabajo, este edificio. Y si decimos que lo queremos en la Cesar Chavez, es porque nosotros sabemos que es el mejor lugar donde podemos obtener transportación rápida.
We are the ones who are working and contributing with our taxes to the public funding. It is not your money that is in play today. We are the ones who are going to be paying the rent and we are the ones who need this building located precisely where there is public transport to take us to our jobs.
Ya verás, se me acaba mi tiempo, pero lo quiero decir, esta noche váyanse a su casa y piensen, ¿qué harían ustedes sin todos nosotros?